Mrs. Pete, could you please call us out of closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has concluded its closed session and is in the process, as you can see, of reconvening. They discussed item number one on the closed session agenda, which is three potential litigation matters under Government Code Section 549, 56.9, Sub D, Sub 2, as well as Sub E, Sub 1. They discussed the matters and provided staff with direction, and no reportable action was taken. That concludes the closed session report.
Okay, so that would be the adjournment of our special meeting. We'll start our other meeting in about two minutes. Okay, I'd like to call the regular council meeting for October 28th to order. Could you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, we ask your blessing on those of us that have been called to lead the community in which we live, play, and work. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and the courage to know what to do is good and right. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Okay, could we have a roll call, please? Mr. Skalik?
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Present.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sannella?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay. Moving on, our first business is going to be a proclamation for Domestic Violence Month. And if the council could please join me in front. Okay. Okay, this evening, we have John Fan Cleef, the CEO of the Community Resource Center, with us. I'm going to present you with the proclamation, and I'll let you say a few words if you don't mind. Okay, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Definitely not something that we want to talk about, but something that is important to talk about and reduce the stigma about it. We are lucky enough to have one safe place here in San Marcos, so we have a wonderful place for our victims of domestic, actually, I'll call them our survivors of domestic violence. Place for them to go where they can be cared for, loved with, all of the resources right at one place, so they're less traumatized. And so, anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Okay, two in five women and one in four men in the United States have experienced intimate partner violence or stalking and reported an IPV-related impact in their lifetime. Crimes like domestic violence inhibit our community from reaching its fullest potential, and although great progress in bringing awareness to and providing protections against domestic violence has been made, much work remains. Community Resource Center offers comprehensive support to domestic violence survivors. In 2024, 82 individuals found refuge in Community Resource Center's emergency shelter. Fifty-two children benefited from a safe nurturing space in its therapeutic children's center. Three thousand forty-two calls to its emergency hotline connected survivors to critical lifesaving assistance, and nearly three thou- or four thousand individuals benefited from its prevention, education, and resources. To break the cycle of abuse and build safer communities, Community Resource Center works to prevent domestic violence in the community, offering classes and workshops to students, teachers, and parents to raise awareness around domestic violence and teen dating abuse as well, and how to develop healthy relationships. Last year, Community Resource Center impacted over eighty-six hundred individuals serving those in need in the North County coastal region as a leader in social services with a mission to help our neighbors create paths to healthy food, stable homes, and safe relationships. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim October 2025 Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all of our citizens to raise awareness and advocate to support our domestic violence survivors and prevention education activities. And if you know something, please speak up and help someone. It's really important that we all come together on this. Thank you. I'm going to give that to you. And if you'd like to say a few words.
Sure. I'd like to thank Mayor Jones and council members for acknowledging this Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Yes, a terrible thing to have to bring awareness to. And I'm a determined optimist, determined to make good in my world. And if there's one thing that I'm pleased about this is it acknowledges that we all stand united for survivors. It acknowledges that we all stand united agreeing that every person should be able to live in their home safely without fear of violence. And these are important things for us to unite around. We are present in San Marcos as Community Resource Center, embedded at one safe place and engaged in the prevention education in schools in San Marcos, and it's an honor to receive this on behalf of our organization, the team I work with, and the people we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to remind everyone that, not bringing your attention, but if Councilmember LeBlanc gets up, she recently had back surgery, so don't think that something is wrong with her. She's just trying to stay comfortable, and we definitely want her to stay comfortable. So I just wanted to mention that, so you didn't wonder why she's getting up and walking around. She's just trying to stretch her legs. Anyway, next up is our Veterans Day presentation, and I do believe that we have, I'm sorry. Yes, there you are. So Colonel Rasset is going to come and provide the PowerPoint. Welcome. And it's a wonderful time of year, so this is right around the corner. It's coming right up.
It's only a couple of weeks from now.
I know.
Heidi and I had a split forces tonight. One with the grandchildren, one came to the council meeting. I'm not going to tell you who won, but she went with the grandchildren on here.
She probably had the easier job. No, I'm just kidding.
No, we love our grandchildren.
Yeah, the fun one, yes.
So, oh, excellent. All said, Mayor, council members, Ms. Bender, Heidi and I are excited to invite everyone to this year's Veterans Day ceremony. It's a little bit different this year, but following a very similar format. And in fact, what's interesting, back in 2014, for those that may have been here, Dr. Linda Dudik had four World War II generation people on the stage, and she interviewed them. This year, Dr. Linda Dudik is back again. She's not going to interview people on the stage, but she's going to talk to everyone about how do you capture lessons learned from your loved ones that served in the military? And what she's, and this, by the way, this is her passion, you'll see it in a few minutes when I go on her slide, but she wants to teach everybody lessons she's learned, because this is what she does. Nonprofit website, it's just awesome. But any event, she was here about, what is it, I guess, 11 years ago. And next slide, please. We always follow the themes of the VA, Veterans Affairs, Service to Our Nation. Not too hard to find, follow it this year, especially being the 80th anniversary of the end of World War II. Next slide, please. Ceremony agenda will look similar to those who've seen it in the past. Pre-ceremony events start with a large group photo. You saw it on the first slide. We'll do that at 10:30 in the morning, and then 11 is when we begin the actual ceremony. And we begin it with a moment of silence and taps to mirror what goes on in England, or across the world, really, 11 o'clock on the 11th, the 11th, the 11th. Introduce those, six services, the invocation. We have singers this year from San Marcos High School, which is always great. We'll have the Mission Hills Jazz Band there, which is always great. I mentioned the guest speaker will be the next slide. Not yet, not yet. Oh, you went too fast, too fast.
Review.
Mayor will have the opportunity to say a few things, and Heidi will do the reading of silent rags, predigition, and reception. But what's really different, and this is exciting, typically, you see the San Marcos High School Air Force JRTC, always there, been there for a long time. We, at one time, we brought in Camp Pendleton Marines, but then we just have the cadets do it. This year, we got four San Marcos groups, all cadets. We got the Air Force JRTC from San Marcos High School. We have the Navy JRTC from the Mission Hills High School. We have Army cadets from CSUSM, and we're going to have California cadets from the Woodland Park Middle School. So all four exist in San Marcos, they're all going to be a part of the ceremony. It's going to be great. Next slide, please. Our guest speaker, Dr. Dudik was unable to make it tonight. That's her on the right there. Picture next to, I don't know how many of you remember Ted Roosevelt. He was our Pearl Harbor survivor.
Just plain Ted, right?
Yeah, just plain Ted, yes.
Yeah, just plain Ted, he had a book.
Yeah, our Pearl Harbor survivor. He unfortunately passed a few years ago, but that was a photo she had of him, and she's unbelievable. From '75 to '79, full-time position at Palomar, teaching history. And then, and quite a bit on the World War II generation, and then when she retired, that's been her full-time, and she puts unbelievable hours in it. She has a website that we're going to encourage everyone to go out and look at, WorldWarIIExperience.com. And so she's going to, in addition to talk about how do you find things about your loved ones that served, she also is going to have a few tables set up of those that she's researched from the San Marcos area, so we can all go up and learn more about some of those from her past. Next slide, please. Heidi wanted me to tell everyone from her, please, you're welcome. We look forward to seeing everyone, forward to talking to everyone, but yeah, it's going to, it's going to be a good ceremony this year. We're going to have everyone there, we're going to change all the flags at 10. The ceremony begins at 11. The reception begins at 12, for those who've been there in the past, that will sound familiar. And before I leave, I want to make sure I thank Mayor, the council members, city staff, Ms. Bender, and our surprise back there, Jennifer. She's awesome to work with. She's awesome to work with. And every time we meet, she brings us to this great restaurant that serves a wonderful salad. You know, their salad bar is pretty remarkable.
Wait, is this the Senior Activity Center? Because I heard that they have quite the salad bar. In fact, someone told me it was world famous.
It is. I agree with all that, so.
I gotta check it out.
And that's where we have our meetings, and we go there, we eat, we meet. Now, Jennifer is wonderful to work with. So thank you all very much, and I look forward to seeing everybody on 11 November. Show up a little after 10, photo at 10:30, and then the ceremony, of course, kicks at 11.
All right, we shall see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had a quick question of staff. Do we have a graphic coming out for Veterans Day? I didn't see it in our newsletter, but maybe can we get one of those so that we can post it on our social media, so we can get all of San Marcos to know? Perfect. All right, we will get that done. Thank you. Okay, next up is going to be our San Marcos Community Foundation presentation. Carol Gandel from our community foundation, our president, actually, will be providing an annual report.
I am. Hello, all. It's a pleasure to be here. And Councilmember LeBlanc, it's really nice to see you here. Hope you're feeling better. Good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members and our San Marcos community. It's my honor and privilege to come before you this evening to present the 2025 Annual Report for the San Marcos Community Foundation. This has been a very busy year for us and one I am very proud to discuss. In the 37 years since the San Marcos Community Foundation was established with a million-dollar gift to the city, we've given away over 800 grants, almost $2 million to over 330 nonprofit organizations serving our San Marcos residents. The average grant was about $1,800 up until these last couple of years, when the number of applicants has risen dramatically. Since 2020, the average number of grants each quarter has risen from less than 10 to up to 25 per quarter. Even, and even though the amounts requested have risen dramatically as well, the annual amount we have to give has not. It still averages between $55,000 and $70,000 per year. Last February, we collaborated again with the Cal State San Marcos College of Business Administration Senior Experience Project. Building on the strategic plan of 2023, the goal of this project was to help create a marketing and publicity plan to further the fundraising goals and granting power of the foundation. The students were able to provide some valuable feedback and information that will continue to assist the foundation to build our brand and recognition in the community. During this same period, we applied for our first-ever Board of Supervisors Community Enhancement Grant. We're fortunate to succeed and receive $10,000 from Supervisor Desmond, yay, for marketing, promotional, and training use. With some of the grant funds, we purchased a pop-up tent and tablecloths for use at community events, such as the double peak race this past September and this month's Fall Festival. And we bought ad space in several notable event brochures. We also bought a couple of reusable Big Cheques and polo shirts, I'm modeling, for our board members to wear at the many check presentations we participate in with our grant recipients, along with a variety of giveaway items, and I think you all should have some, in an effort to build some brand recognition in our community. There we go. The foundation has just submitted another grant application this year to continue and build on the momentum we've established. With these funds, we plan to implement more of the Senior Experience Strategic and Marketing Plan recommendations, including social media support, and creating a newsletter to keep our grantees, donors, and the San Marcos community updated on our activities. I've participated in two podcasts, one with the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce, President Rick Longadis, and another with Drew Schlossberg Spotlight on the Community, and we hope to do more. A large part of the supervisor grant money has been dedicated to collaborative sponsorships with some of the major organizations in San Marcos. We're focused on being strategic to reach the most potential donors as we try and spread our name and our mission. Our strategic plan for the next couple of years is to develop a donor base, to grow our endowment, to keep up with the exponential growth of the city. Over the last 37 years, we've given out almost $2 million on that same $1 million that we were given, essentially through interest earnings, but it's not enough. Each fiscal year, we have available roughly between $55,000 and $70,000. On average, each quarter, we're now receiving 15 to 20 grant applications that often total over $125,000 per quarter. This past August, we grant, we funded 14 grants for a total of $14,000. This current quarter has 25 applicants asking for $125,000, with only $16,000 that's available to grant out. I'm very proud of the board that we've built over the last couple of years. They all take the responsibilities we have as stewards of the foundation very seriously and represent the city and foundation well when they meet with grantees. You may not be aware, but unlike many of our sister foundations, we do not limit our giving to a single category each year. We take any and all applications that are submitted, so the, the variety is, is pretty broad. As you can see from the slide, the community foundation gives real money to real people and programs in our community. These grants, which are from all of our past givings, so some of them are grantees who no longer are on our list, but they are still among the top recipients. They help a wide variety of San Marcos residents, children from elementary to high school and beyond, the arts, culture, environment, and sports, health and human services, basic needs such as the food banks and diapers, and even civic infrastructure to help organizations to keep functioning. There is no age or interest group that does not reach out to us, and we want to help. The San Marcos Community Foundation is working hard to fulfill the vision and mission created under the leadership of the city council in 1988 and the current council in 2025. We've all seen the needs of our community grow as we've grown into the destination city here in North County. We recognize we need to do more. The board asks for your support in building name recognition and the importance of the foundation mission to help inspire potential donors, people and businesses to give to the endowment to meet these growing needs. Our goal this year is to seek out prominent members in the community, to inform them of our mission, and invite them to join in and donate. We want people to start thinking about including the foundation in their estate and corporate philanthropic planning, and I invite all those who are watching this meeting to consider donating to the foundation as well. We thank you for your time, support, and consideration. Where I'm available to answer any questions or set up another time to further discuss any of our ideas and for growing the granting power of the San Marcos Community Foundation. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
What is your website? Because you do have a QR code there, but for folks that are at home, do you have a website that they can go to, to donate if they'd like?
Ah, we do have, we have a website through the city website.
Okay, so you go to the city website?
Go to the city website, click on Departments.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways you can go about it. Either the city website, we're under commissions.
Van-Marcos.net.
Yes.
Go to.
Or SanMarcosCommunityFoundation.com.
Okay.
We'll also bring you to that webpage.
Perfect. Okay. Sorry to, sorry to catch it like that.
If someone would like to send a check, all they need to do is make it out to the community foundation and send it in to One Civic Center Drive.
Okay.
We'd be happy to make it.
Wonderful. Any questions from the council? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
More of just a statement or saying thanks, but Carol, great presentation. Appreciate the annual updates. I know that you've reached out, I think, to all of us recently, and we've all sat down with you individually, and I think you have a lot of great ideas that we talked about when we were having coffee. I know you probably didn't have time to talk about all those in detail, but I hope those, those conversations and those ideas continue, and I'm looking forward to helping you however I can.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate all the help that all of you have, have discussed and offered to us, and we just, as I say, I would hope that you are able to help us connect with people who might see this as a valuable resource for our city.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service, too.
Yeah, I just want to say, Carol, thank you for being here and echo what our deputy mayor has said. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for all the individuals that are involved with the community foundation. You've done a great job leading the foundation, and this was a great presentation, so keep up the great work.
Thank you. I did forget one thing. I want to thank our city staff, who are absolutely the best, and, you know, I try to make sure that people know that we have some really good people who are helping us on top of all the other work that they do. So kudos to Phil and kudos to Mickey, and, and thanks to Michelle for all the support that we get from, from the city as well.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, too, because not everyone does, so appreciate your taking the time. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do there, are there any items that any council members wish to pull? Discussion? No? Seeing none, I'm, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Seeing none. It moves unanimously, and we have some public speakers. First up is going to be Andy Amador, followed by Natalie Aguilar, then Bill Steiner. Those will be our first three, so Andy Amador. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I was here on October 14th, talking about the Linda Vista. It's not a median, I was corrected. It's a left-turning lane, so I would like to put that on record. Thank you very much. They got back to me on 10/17. They said that they were going to go and investigate it, a year of just them going back and forth, and I just come here to humbly say thank you very much. I don't feel so like, I don't know what's the word, is I, I feel like I'm backed up by somebody, and it gave me points with my work as well, with my employer, and I showed them the video and everything, but I, I just come here to say thank you very much for listening to me, respecting mayors and councilmen, how great you mean, and thank you very much for listening out, and hopefully, from a year from now, we'll see changes. I'll come back in a year's time, and we'll see what happens. If not, I just say I can just, I'll put it on record. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking your time to come in, and that's two for this evening for staff.
Yeah, I just have to say that it's amazing, the city, city hall, I mean, I feel, I mean, first of all, my dentist is down, down the hall, and then second, I feel that I can come in, ask questions to any of the, of the councilmen, I mean, any of the staff, and it's just great that they get back to me. I mean, I was really happy that they actually got back to me, just so quickly. I was like, okay, they took me really serious, so, but yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is going to be Natalie Aguilar from Universidad Popular, Bill Steiner, and then Hunter Lenny? Better put my glasses on. Hi, Natalie.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Natalie Aguilar. I'm a community educator with Universidad Popular, and I'm here to provide our on-the-record updates. First is our update on the Day of the Dead workshop series. So we continue our Day of the Dead workshop series this month with a Papel Picado workshop this past Wednesday, October 17. So we continue our Day of the Dead workshop series this month with a Papel Picado workshop this past Wednesday, October fifteenth, and then we also had one on Wednesday, October twenty-second, but that one was a Sugar Skulls workshop. Each of those events had over a hundred people in attendance, and we also had Parks and Rec visit us during the Sugar Skulls workshop, so thank you to them. We are thankful to Restoration Abbey for their continued collaboration. We continue to have workshops that honor and continue the legacy of our departed loved ones. Our next workshop is an Ofrenda workshop, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, October twenty-ninth. We conclude the series on Thursday, October thirtieth, with a celebration for Day of the Dead. All events are from six to eight p.m., and we hope you could all join us. Second is an update on our Universidad Popular food pantry. We continue with our food pantry, serving community members in our area. We are experiencing increased needs and demand for food, housing, transportation, and other critical needs, especially among elders and agricultural workers. Donations are always welcome at our pantry. And then third is an update on our civics program. We continue to rent out the community room to host civics education classes every Tuesday from five to seven p.m. We currently have one right now. Thank you for the partnership with the City of San Marcos, whose collaboration makes our mission of empowering the community through civic engagement possible. And that's it for now. Thank you, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Natalie. Next up is Bill Steiner, followed by Hunter Lin, and then after Hunter will be John Mosher. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Thank you all for the hard work that you do to make San Marcos a great city to call home. I am Bill Steiner, a homeowner from the Skylark Homeowners Association. In April of 2018, in this very chamber, Madam Mayor, you and Jim Desmond led council approval for the eighty-nine homes to be built in the Murai Skylark community. You set the place and approved what should have been one of San Marcos's nicest neighborhoods. Lennar sold their last home in this community in 2023, more than two years ago. More than two years ago. And yet, Lennar has yet to complete the required infrastructure, including sidewalks, streets, service roads, trails, and more than 10,000 feet of fencing and remediation plans for the forty-acre conservation preserve that surrounds our homes. Since infrastructure is still under construction, city staff is unable to sign off on Skylark's project completion and Skylark's compliance to city codes and standards. The HOA is in limbo, unable to move forward as a community because Lennar retains title to the infrastructure components. Money needed to complete Skylark should be a rounding error for Lennar, the country's second-largest home builder. We are very thankful to Joseph Faraci, city staff, and Michelle Bender, who are working diligently to help us. We are reassured to know that the city still holds over $6 million in construction bonds and $10 million in insurance for the Skylark project. We encourage city staff and council to use all of the tools at your disposal to motivate Lennar to step up, finish work, and complete the Skylark community. Homeowners are tired of living in a never-ending construction zone. How can you help us?
Okay, so this is a non-agenda item, so staff will get back to you. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Michelle Bender, thank you so much.
I do have a question for staff.
Yes.
Bill's come a couple times, and thanks for taking time out of your evenings to come down and be with us. I know this is not agendized, Michelle, but it sounds like staff and the developer are working together on this. Is there any sort of estimated time of completion or anything that you can share from, or maybe get back to us after you've done a little bit of research on it?
Yes, there has, as Mr. Steiner said, some of the improvements had stalled out for a moment. Lennar, about two weeks ago, picked up in earnest, and so Isaac Etamendi, our Development Services Director, is receiving daily photographs from Lennar to document the fact that they are making progress. We really elevated it within the hierarchical structure at Lennar, and I think we've got the right people on notice at the moment, so they really are attempting to move forward and make these updates that we've promised Mr. Steiner. So at the moment, we have momentum. We're getting documentation on the daily that things are moving forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next is Hunter Lin, followed by John Mosher, and then Marlene Walder. Hello, Hunter, welcome.
Hello. Good to see you guys. My name's Hunter Lin. I live up in the Stone Canyon Development. Mike, you're our rep. Thank you. Thank you all, by the way, for everything you've done for San Marcos. The roadways, much better. Very grateful. Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about the trails that pass through our neighborhood. They've become pretty much an unmitigated disaster in terms of the amount of people and the type of activities that are occurring on the trails on a daily basis. Unfortunately, we bought at a time when the trails weren't used very much, and it was very peaceful and quiet in our neighborhood, but now that is not the case. We are often woken up at about four a.m. during the week, and usually the trail activities subside about ten or eleven p.m., so we get about four or five hours of rest every day from the trail. It's great it's that popular. It's very cool. It's a great trail. I hike it a lot, but I don't hike it at four o'clock in the morning. So I'm here today to ask you guys to, you know, assist the neighborhoods up in Discovery Hills. It's a really serious situation. I don't think any of you would want strangers walking through your neighborhood at four a.m. playing music. I've called the police or the sheriff multiple times, and I don't know if they've come out. I haven't seen them arrive yet, but it's a very frustrating situation when all we want is just a little bit of privacy and peace and quiet, and it's just not very healthy for our community, in my opinion. So I wanted to share that. You guys have done a lot of good things, and I'm grateful for it, but this is something that I think needs to be addressed, and I hope you guys can spend some time on it, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we have our cops deputies look at, to see if we can come up with a plan of some sort? Take a look at it?
Yes, we can absolutely continue. We've been working on the Stone Canyon struggles for many, many years now.
Yeah.
And so we've tried a number of things. Clearly, it hasn't been successful yet. Mr. Lin is still not satisfied with the volume. We do have extra ranger patrols. We've added signage. We've tried to physically improve the area. We've even gone so far as to research what it would take to move the trail, which would mean that we would move a trail through Habitat for millions and millions of dollars. So yes, we will continue.
And it was a project, I mean, it was an approval, it was a condition and the approval of the project. I guess just one question that I might lend is that we might want to figure out if we could do lighting, motion sensor lighting that maybe would be a deterrent, not at the houses, but something that would possibly deter people from actually walking on the trails in the middle of the night or late, early morning or whatever time it is.
Yeah. I just want to add that probably, Hunter, it's probably been about almost two years now that you invited me to the community, and we sat in the backyard with probably twenty or thirty of the residents, and I thought we were making some progress because it's been a little quiet, from the community at least. And I know staff's put a tremendous amount of work on this with signage and with the rangers, and since I hadn't heard anything about this until, you know, for a while, until the night, are we still doing the signage and the rangers and those types of things?
Yes.
Yes, we are continuing with the extra ranger patrols. The signage is up. We did hear from Mr. Lin probably two weeks ago, requesting that we try something new and different. We have convened the usual team, the Public Works, Parks and Recreation, our legislative analyst, who's been communicating with Mr. Lin. So we're taking a fresh set of eyes to it with any new staff that have come on board to see if there's something we just haven't found yet that might be the magic solution.
I know it's a tough one to solve, but I really appreciate staff's willingness to look at it from all angles with the community.
Right. Okay, thanks. Next up is John Mosher, followed by Marlene Walder.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember, City Staff. My name's John Mosher with San Marcos Mobile Home Residents Association. Tonight, I just want to talk about, we've been working with city staff, Sylvia Tess, their group, and has helped us line up to work with True Care and Pace West for outreach to all of our seniors and also all of our mobile home parks, whether all age or fifty-five plus. We just had an event at the Senior Center. We are now ready to go out to each park. Doing this, I've been thinking about how I could interact with each of you in each of the districts so that when we go to the parks in your districts, you have an invite to show up so that the council members can actually be there for these events. I was getting ready to send out more of a mass email, include you guys in it, with a few people from Pace West, True Care, Luke and myself, to start setting this up. So I want to let you know ahead of time, that's what we're trying to do. The other thing is, we've also been doing outreach with the school district to find a way to interact with the kids and share the knowledge our seniors have over the years before the kids get out of high school, share some life experience. I've been going to the school board meetings, and they put me in touch with Dr. Christine Correio. She met with Luke and I, very knowledgeable, and there's different programs that she's in charge of that it looks like we'll be able to interact at different levels, a lot of different ways. And I think I've run into a potential future person with the youth commission over at San Marcos High, Hannah, she's only a freshman, but she's working with Sarah's daughter, the chairman over at the school district, and they're putting together a club to interact with seniors. So I just want to let you guys know that that's going on, and I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up, Marlene Walder. Welcome, Marlene. I feel like I haven't seen you in a while. I, well, it was, I'm just saying, that was the first time in months that I've seen you, so I haven't seen much of you.
I've been in the audience, but not speaking.
Ah.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, I'm back about traffic. And also, as far as the fire thing, I've talked to, that we're in a fire district. If you're in nine-two-oh-seven-eight, I don't know about six-nine zip code. And I talked to a few people who have received notices from their insurance companies stating that we are in a high-fire district and the increase will be thirty-five percent. And I asked if I could get the letter, and they said, no, it came about two months ago, and we didn't keep it. They are giving them advance notice so that they could try and find another insurance company, but it's very difficult right now because a lot of the insurance companies have gone out of California. As for the streets, we've had another, not a major accident, but the guy did get hit in his taillight turning left into our park, and it ricocheted his car into our wall. Fortunately, he put his foot on the brake, I guess, and I don't think any of the bricks broke. The cars are not stopping, the ones that are going onto the freeway. They're blocking the road if we're trying to get out, and if they're blocking the view, it's hard to see the cars coming up in the other lane. Someone was very nice. It was only two forty-five today, and I tried to turn left into the park, and I tell you, I was scared stiff. The cars will not slow down, and I think the only way we're going to do it is if we make a double signal for the people going straight ahead instead of just the people getting on the freeway. I don't see any other thing because the cars are totally ignoring our entrance or exit way of going into the park. And normally, at two-thirty in the afternoon, I should be able to turn in. At three o'clock, you don't take your life, you know. The accidents happen. The guy did come before three-thirty, I think, for that accident, but I go to the next block, take the signal, and pray no one's running the signal to turn left and then go in the back gate. Thank you.
Marlene, could we have someone go over and look and see if there's anything that we can come up with? All right, thank you. Okay, next up, ordinances. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five, fifteen-sixty-six, and resolution twenty-twenty-five, ninety-five-oh-seven, amending Title V Business Regulations, Chapter 5.55 Tobacco Retail License, and Chapter 5.04, Section 5.04-110 Uniform Licensing Procedures of the San Marcos Municipal Code, and amending the Infraction and Misdemeanor Bail Schedule. Mrs. Peak, do you have an introduction on this, which would be the first reading of the ordinance, amending Title V, Chapter 5.55, and Chapter 5.04 of the San Marcos Municipal Code?
Indeed, I do.
Then you won't have to say it all these times.
Thank you.
Set it for you.
So, thank you. The proposed changes to the tobacco retail licensing structure, which have just been delineated by Madam Mayor, they relate to the underlying tobacco retail license, which I'm going to refer to as a TRL. It was initially enacted to implement local control over certain aspects of tobacco retail sales and requires tobacco retailers to secure and maintain a TRL in good standing. Related avenues by which the city implements its tobacco-related policy goals include the annual sheriff's compliance check on retailers, the youth decoy operations where persons under twenty-one attempt to purchase tobacco and which are conducted in partnership with the Great Prevention Coalition and the Great Vista Community Clinic, the citation and associated processing of violations that are discovered as a result of the compliance check and those youth decoy operations, and the enforcement and related fines, as well as TRL suspensions and revocations. And next slide. "The proposed ordinance seeks to update, refine, and clarify the enforcement provisions of the TRL provisions by including new defined terms and definitions, updating the retail license fees, modifying the enforcement language, and clarifying administrative duties and policies." Next slide. "For example, the defined terms now include, quote, 'emerging nicotine product,' end quote, which we believe will include within its scope the new permutations of nicotine products, and it specifies that such products are to be treated as tobacco products under this chapter. The described purpose of Chapter 5.55, as set forth in revised Section 5.55.010, includes addressing nicotine pouches and emergency nicotine delivery products, which are defined in new Section 5.55.020D as including any nicotine-containing product derived from any source and is consumed, absorbed, inhaled, dissolved, or ingested by any means, including but not limited to pouches, lozenges, gums, and strips." "We believe that this new definition of regulated tobacco products, together with the existing prohibition in Section 5.55.090A against violating any local, state, or federal tobacco-related law, will obviate the need to constantly modify the ordinance when a new technology or methodology for nicotine delivery is developed or a new prohibition comes into play at the federal and/or state level, and allows the city to enforce prohibitions against those things as soon as possible." Next slide, please. "The fine amounts have been updated in changes that are being suggested for Section 5.55.100. Rather than following the standard administrative citation fee schedule, which is set forth in the screen, we believe that it would be far more effective to have had monetary penalties that are more in line with the seriousness of the offenses that are encountered, which are sales of illegal products and/or sale..." are sales of illegal products and/or sales to underage persons. Proposed for the city council's consideration is a new fine schedule whereby each and every violation is now $1,000, even for the first violation. Next slide, please. As currently provided in the ordinance, in addition to the fine, the first violation carries a warning, the second violation carries the fine and a 90-day suspension of the license, the third carries a fine and a suspension of the license for up to a year, the fourth violation carries the fine and the potential revocation of the license altogether. All of the steps are subject to appeal and meeting all associated due process requirements. We believe that making the consequences of even initial violations much more significant and severe monetarily may incentivize retailers to comply. It's clear to me that the existing reliance on the administrative fine process and amounts is not doing the job. Next slide, please. Proposed revisions to the enforcement provisions of Section 5.55.100 include clarifying that each violation can be fined and enforced separately, as they are today, even if separate violations are spotted during the same inspection or decoy event. This is consistent with the general penalty provisions of Municipal Code, Chapter 1.12. Window frontage regulations are proposed to be clarified in 5.55.090E for consistency with the city's zoning ordinance, and to remove any confusion retailers may have, or say that they have. Suffice it to say that a door can be a window, if it's clear. Descriptions of youth decoy and annual compliance check programs have been refined in Section 5.55.090C and D to conform to current practices. Additionally, administrative hearing procedures are proposed to be updated to remove mailing requirements to allow electronic notification regarding appeal hearings. The faster the better. And to clarify retailer obligations during suspensions, we propose to clarify that all suspension, anyone suspended, means suspension of all retailer obligations, including online sales, because we had one retailer express some confusion over that issue. Suspension means suspension of all sales. All tobacco-related sales must cease on the occurrence of a suspension. Next slide, please. We also propose to modify San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04, which relates to administrative hearings. Section 5.04.110 now provides for decisions to be rendered by the hearing officer within two days. That's not a whole lot of time for the hearing officer. We suggest modifying that to 10 days, which would be consistent with administrative hearings conducted under Municipal Code, Chapter 1.14, Section 1.110, excuse me. Next slide, please. Resolution Number 2016-8235 established the TRL fee for new and renewing retailers. Section 3 of that resolution authorizes city manager or designated to discount the TRL annual fee for retailers meeting certain compliance measures, such as card readers. And the discount was seen as a way to encourage and incentivize TRL compliance. The discount policy has not effectively encouraged TRL compliance, and is instead an administrative burden to offer and to track each year. As a city manager was authorized, but was not required, to implement a TRL annual fee discount, on our recommendation, staff would instead develop an internal policy regarding TRL fees and renewals that will not include a discount. That concludes the staff report, and staff is available to address any questions that the council may have regarding the proposed ordinance and resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. First, I'd like to thank our partners, the Prevention Coalition and the Vista Community Clinic, for the decoy operations, and really appreciate all of your efforts on that. I'm glad that we are, you know, we were kind of wondering, would we be able to do this quick enough? You know, I was pretty concerned when I saw the ZYN products, those pouches that go in your mouth, and you know, kids see it on the ground. I remember one time when my son, he's 29 now, by the way, but when I had taken him to a park, and he put a cigarette butt in his mouth, I almost had a heart attack. And, you know, they can get sick from that sort of thing, you know, I had to do the whole sweep out. But you know, with those pouches, and they're just so concentrated, that is very concerning, I think, to make sure we don't have those in the wrong hands. And folks, if you're out there smoking or using these products, please throw your trash in the trash. It is trash. It's not something that we want you to throw on the ground. And then I'm glad that we're going with a higher fee schedule, because the violations, I just think some of our retailers are not taking us seriously enough, so I'm glad that we're going to be doing that. We do have six speakers, so I just wanted to, would the council like to speak now, or would you like to wait until we have our six speakers?
I just have a point of clarification, Mayor.
What's that?
Speak, the change from two to 10 days for the hearing, is that window of opportunity in-person, remotely, or does it to the discretion of either party?
The change from two to 10 days is for the hearing officer to issue his decision. So the hearing itself can be in-person. If the retailer wants an in-person meeting, they can certainly have it. It can also be remote, if all the parties agree, and you know, it saves people time and money, and so we've had a number of hearings virtually, but we also have had a number of in-person hearings. So it's really up to the retailer, and it's part of our due process to allow them to choose the hearing mechanism, and we have allowed them to do that to date.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion, or we'll just go straight to the speakers? Okay, Allison Reyes will be first, followed by Leti Robles, followed by Jaclyn Mejia-Garcia. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name's Allison Reyes, I use she/her pronouns. I'm a San Marcos resident. I own a home just a few blocks from Nob Hill Elementary. I'm a mother of two, and I also work at Cal State San Marcos. I do want to clarify, though, that I'm not here on behalf of Cal State San Marcos, just as myself, as a constituent, and so. I'm here to urge you to strengthen our current tobacco retail license to protect our young people. I've seen firsthand the draw that the flavored tobacco products have on young adults, and so I ask that you put all available restrictions on flavors specifically, including those that go beyond the state law. I've also seen firsthand young adults using some of the nicotine products that you had mentioned and that were talked about in the slides, and so I encourage you to do everything that was shared there. I also ask that you include minimum distances between tobacco retailers and youth-friendly spaces. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and we made the decision to raise our girls here. A huge reason for that was because of the family-friendly community that prioritizes the well-being of its young people. So I'd ask that we continue that prioritization by keeping these products from being sold near parks, schools, and other such spaces. We have an opportunity here to add additional measures that keep tobacco products out of the hands of our young people, so as an educator, as a parent, I urge you to take this chance to strengthen the tobacco retail license, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Allison. Next up, Leti Robles, resident, parent, and, and a member of the San Marcos Prevention Coalition. Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. I'm here, of course, to support the changes on the tobacco retailer's license, but before I move forward, two weeks ago, when we were here with all the students from all the different schools, I walked away thinking that I didn't thank you for the great provincial work. I kind of thank you on behalf of the schools, but not as a coalition, so thank you for all the support over the years, especially you, Mayor Jones. As part of Red Ribbon Week celebration this week, we were actually at San Marcos Middle School today. High school seniors were there, talking to sixth graders about making a drug-free life choice. And innocent sixth graders asked all sorts of questions, questions as innocent as, what is tobacco? Or, how do you buy tobacco? Or, what is secondhand smoke? Basic questions related to tobacco, and of course, what is flavored tobacco? And why do they make flavored tobacco? Little do they know that their school is sitting in one of the highest dense areas in our city, where the majority of a lot of the retailers are, and where every year, it doesn't fail, because I always look to cover District One as part of my decoy operation during the summer. We have retailers selling to minors. So I just want to mention that anecdote from our local students, from our community. The danger is out there. We support the changes. In addition, we really hope we make it a priority to remove all illegal flavored tobacco. So thank you so much, and I'm not going to speak to the harms of flavored tobacco, because we all know it, and I'm sure I'm going to, we're going to hear more from our partners. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Leti. Next up, Jaclyn Mejia-Garcia, followed by Lisa Archibald, and then Brenna Gill.
My name is Jaclyn Mejia. I'm a junior at Mission Hills High School, and I'm proud to speak for the Youth Advocacy Coalition. We're here with one clear message: You don't need drugs or alcohol to be strong, confident, or successful. Being drug-free means being in control of your choices, your goals, and your future. It means choosing one's happiness, which comes from our choices, and we believe we can stand together, support each other, and inspire one another, that living drug and alcohol-free isn't just smart, but also powerful to one's choice in life. To my experience, I have seen many young individuals decide to change their lives with drugs, thinking in their perspective that it will change their lives to better, and will feel happier and more belonging. But the truth comes when they become addicted to terrible substances that just blindly leads them to a bad life, and actually leads them on the wrong route. According to drug abuse statistics, 1.86 million adolescents aged 12 to 17, 7.2% of teens nationwide reported using drugs in the last month. We should keep in mind that our future and lives can be brighter and better when we stay away from drugs and alcohol, and knowing to not consume these substances, as it can badly affect the many opportunities and wonderful experiences of life. Thank you.
Great job, and congratulations. I mean, really great job. Thank you for being brave. I honestly could have not done it at your age. I just wanted to tell you. Thank you. Next up is going to be Lisa Archibald, followed by Brianna, or Brenna Gill, I say that every time, and then followed up by Casey String. Hi, good to see you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Archibald. I am a proud District Two San Marcos resident. It's great to be here. It has been a decade since the TRL passed here in San Marcos, and in that time, California has made great progress in reducing smoking rates. Sadly, tobacco use is still the number-one cause preventable death, and depending on who your social circle is and who you are around, you may not see it, but it is still a very devastating toll that takes up. Since 2016, tobacco products themselves have evolved, as we've seen, and the tobacco industry has changed how they market their products. More than ever, youth in our community are struggling with isolation, and anxiety, and the overwhelming amount of stress that leads them to tobacco use. The public health and safety of youth in San Marcos are threatened when tobacco retailers fail to comply with local laws. Tonight, I'd like to thank you for updating the penalty schedule for the first violation to $1,000. This holds businesses in our community accountable for their actions, selling products to youth that can easily be avoided through proper training. With that, I'd like to ask you tonight to further strengthen the TRL requirements to align with current best practices, to expand the look-back period from three years, as it is now, to five years. And making this adjustment will only affect repeat offenders. Adding this requirement of changing the look-back period will not burden legitimate businesses in our community. Bad businesses are benefiting from dodging fines that they should be paying, which end up costing youth a lifelong struggle of tobacco addiction. Tobacco retail license programs are the most successful when there's strong enforcement and financial penalties. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, Brenna Gill, followed by Casey String. Welcome, Brenna.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Brenna Gill, and I am a freshman at San Marcos High School. I'm really happy that city council is taking this important step in making sure tobacco stores are selling products the right way, and not to anyone under the age of 21. Even though I have only been at San Marcos High School for a short time, I have already seen how popular vaping is among our students. While I don't see a lot of people vaping on campus, I see people vaping as they are walking to school in the morning, and then again as soon as they leave school in the afternoon. A lot of people head across the street to 7-Eleven after school, which is one of the four schools right across the street from school that sell tobacco products. Even when I was back in middle school, vaping was an issue. People were getting in trouble for vaping in the bathrooms, or getting caught with vapes during class. And there are two stores that sell tobacco products right next to each other and to my middle school. While it's great that San Marcos is going to make sure stores are not selling these products to kids, it would be great if the city would make sure the stores are not near schools or too close to each other. We see these stores and their products every day, walking to school or after school, getting snacks. Seeing them all the time can make kids think they're okay and not bad for their health. Most people start using these products when they're kids like me. Maybe if there were less places to buy them, there will be less kids that start. Thank you again for thinking about our health and making policies that protect us from using products that are addictive and can cause lifelong problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenna. Great job. And a freshman, too, on top of it. Nice. I wouldn't even have the courage to stand up there when I was in ninth grade, just saying. And I was a cheerleader, but I don't think I could stand in front of a microphone. I think it was different. Casey, thank you.
Thank you. Not much more to add. I mean, the speakers are just wonderful. Just want to thank you for this opportunity to provide a little bit of comment. Of course, I support the changes to the TRL ordinance, and I think Lisa Archibald's recommendation to look at the look-back period, moving that from three years to five years, is a really smart idea, so, great idea, Lisa. Hopefully, that's something we can consider. Can't believe it's been almost 10 years since we adopted the TRL ordinance, and want to thank Mayor Jones for championing that adoption. As you know, tobacco products over the past 15 years have changed a lot with the introduction of tobacco, into the tobacco marketplace of e-cigarettes and vaping devices. We know that vaping is not safe, and it's not just water vapor, it's actually an aerosol with a mixture of nicotine, tiny pieces of metal, and other toxic chemicals that cause cancer. With enticing flavors and colors, teens are naively becoming hooked to nicotine to battle a lifetime of addiction. Nicotine is extremely addictive, and really, it's brain poison for developing teen brains. Not fully-developed teen brains are much more susceptible to addiction than fully-developed adult brains. Teen vaping is a major problem, but effective public health policies can address this epidemic. The Tobacco Retail License, or TRL, is a critically important tool we have to monitor the stores that sell this very addictive drug. We hear often from our coalition members and community members their concerns with teens getting access to these products and becoming addicted. Unfortunately, we have seen too many of our youth's lives disrupted with nicotine addiction. Parents want to feel confident that the stores their teens go to don't sell tobacco products to minors, and don't sell illegal flavored tobacco products. Parents want protective factors in their community to help prevent and reduce youth alcohol and drug use, and a strong and effective tobacco retail license is one of those protective factors. Thank you for always looking for ways to improve the license to help prevent youth access to tobacco products, ultimately to help our youth be successful, happy, healthy, and safe. Our youth have only one chance to grow up, and so we appreciate your leadership to help our youth be drug-free. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
Just a quick question to either Casey or Leti. When you do your...
Oh, sorry. You're asking a question of them?
Well, so, it's just a question in general. When we do the decoys and other operations, are we doing any more, looking for any more information about environmental factors, such as are there parents or older siblings in the homes that are smoking or vaping that are influencing the...
I don't know. My dad was a chain smoker, but I didn't smoke. None of my siblings did.
It does kind of go both ways. It'd be an interesting statistic to look at.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe Mrs.? Yeah, I don't know, maybe Mrs. Peak could answer that question.
Well, in terms of the youth decoy operations, they're generally a volunteer youth decoy and by youth, I mean under 21. I'm not aware of any other environmental operation about that youth. I think if they're participating in a youth decoy operation, they probably don't smoke and I would imagine that they would apply pressure on anyone in their family who does smoke.
Yeah.
But...
I was using that simply as an example, but I know that there are calls that will come in from the schools about kids smoking, going to the SROs if they're looking into it as something other than just kids doing it. Just interesting to note because the percentage of Americans who are smoking has dropped considerably over the years, now vaping is coming on and it seems to be fairly attractive with the younger people.
Well, the actual cigarettes, I think, are less prevalent, but I think a lot of it, like they were saying, are those alternatives which are the vaping, the pouch things in your mouth, that Zen product, things that are new and emerging that are easier, honestly, because I think, when I think of, you could smell someone that's been smoking. Like you can smell it from a mile away. Vaping, not as much.
They're all bad.
Well, yes, I'm just saying, I'm saying the smell and, and like the visibility of it, I think is a little more forward-facing when you've got the smoky smell to you, but not as much.
And you can always spot a vapor at a signal light because it looks like their interior of their car is on fire.
Exactly, okay. Deputy Mayor, did you have some?
Thank you, and thank you Helen for the presentation, that was a lot to read through and I appreciate it, glad that you did it. And thank you to everybody that came out and spoke in support of this. As, like we've been doing with a number of our ordinances, as times change, products change, technology change, we have to change our ordinances to stay up to speed with everything that's going on in the world. And as a community that, I know that all of us up here on the council and our staff were dedicated to having a community that really promotes healthy lifestyles, this is really a no-brainer for me. I don't think that retailers who sell to minors are doing it by mistake and so if they do do that, if they do choose to do that, they should be fined and they should, hopefully that'll encourage them not to sell to minors and if we can just prevent, you know, one kid from starting to smoke or do some of these other products, it's worthwhile.
Well put, because you get a $1,000 fine right off the bat versus $100, that's a very big difference. It now becomes, that's probably not a good idea. Because you're not going to make money, you're actually going to lose money, which is really the methodology behind it. Councilmember LeBlanc?
I have two young kids, so I'm, this is one thing I'm really passionate about and these emerging products are not just dangerous and marketed at kids and young adults, they're also just very concentrated, which makes them even scarier for long-term effects. So I'm really glad we're looking at this, I'm in full support of everything. Anything we can do to make sure that our youth are not targeted with tobacco, drugs, alcohol, I am totally on board. And I think this is also something we should look at on a regular basis because, you know, it's the pouches now, but at some point it will be something else. This will continue to emerge. So I love the wording we've used, but I think, you know, this is something that will continue to change and grow.
All right, thank you Councilmember. Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you Mayor. I do have one question for staff, maybe Helen. A couple of our speakers, Lisa Archibald and Casey String specifically mentioned their request for us to expand the violation period from three years to five years. Helen, can you explain what that references is, why are we focused on three years versus five years?
Well, we're focused on three years because that was how the ordinance was originally structured. You know, moving to five years might catch more people in the net, but quite frankly, the last, I think, two to three years is where we have a very good comfort level in terms of the documentation with respect to violations and the evidence and the proof of those violations. Broadening it to five years may be something that we would recommend in future. Right now, I personally don't have a level of comfort with respect to what information we have on violations that occurred over three years ago. Because the, you know, the responsibility in terms of the departments has changed. Information may or may not be there that we would like to have for enforcement purposes and if we are going to use it, then I think for due process purposes, we need to have all of that information in the record. And we are very comfortable with the level of record-keeping that has been the last few years. But I personally just don't have a sense of that level of information, documentation, and evidence for the preceding two-year period. So, we actually discussed whether to broaden the time period for five years. I would recommend that we keep that thought, but perhaps wait until my office, who prosecutes these things, has a level of comfort about all of the documentation in terms of everything, the operation itself, the youth decoy, evidencing, you know, of their age and whatnot, where they might actually be. And the information that was deduced during whatever hearing process there might have been. Sometimes when there was no hearing process, I don't believe all of the evidence was retained necessarily in the last five years. So, we just want to make sure that we have all of the information and documentation we need to prove these crimes when they occur. And I'm really comfortable with a three-year period at this point.
Thank you for that clarification, that's really helpful for me too, to think in terms of where we're at and looking forward.
And, you know, we can, if this doesn't work and as time goes by, we have, our comfort level with that period is broadening as well. So, we may be very comfortable in future with a five-year period to look back. Right now, I'm really comfortable with three, I'm less, you know, slightly less comfortable with five. So, I'd like to get through that period and then have us take another look.
Thank you for that clarification, that's very helpful for me. I don't have anything further, I'll be supporting the recommendations.
Thank you Councilmember Nunez. Okay, so Mrs. Peak, moving forward, could we make sure that we hold on to all of the information, make sure that moving forward from today, tonight's action, that we do have everything fully put together so that we could move to a five-year at some point in time? I won't be here. It's hard for me to say that. I won't be here because I'm moving on after 20 years. But I would like for us to have all of the information put together so that we can move forward in a methodical manner where we've got all the information ready to go so that we could look back five years.
Yeah, we've been working with staff and have been very impressed with the level of record-keeping and documentation. So, which has led to extremely good results in the more recent hearings. Not that, I mean, they've all been good, but my comfort level with the documentation is certainly there. So, you know, coming back and broadening that time period is certainly something we would look to do.
Okay, and a very important part of this also is the, just as a reminder, the education of the employees of the businesses. So if we can just keep driving that home, because this is going to get real expensive real fast if they're not paying attention. And, you know, we don't, we don't want them to be out of compliance, really. I mean, at the end, we just want them to actually do what they're supposed to do, do the right thing and we don't want it to be a place where they go, well, it's a calculated business risk, this is a risk, we don't, we want to keep our kids safe. So, I would move to introduce this and then we're good on getting all the information moving forward so that we could make that a five-year look back at some point in time. I have an introduction, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce, all in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none, okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, oh sorry, and adopt the resolution, amending. Okay, so that was on the first reading of the ordinance and then adopt the resolution. I would make a motion to adopt the resolution as well. I was just catching myself actually, but wait a minute, I have two things. And, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Nope, seeing none, passes, both pass unanimously. The introduction of the ordinance and the adoption of the resolution. All right, thank you for coming this evening and thank you to the speakers again. Okay, moving on to new business, Resolution 2025-9508, 2025-9509, and Ordinance 2025-1567, Enhanced E-Bike Safety Education and Enforcement Activities, including prohibiting persons under the age of 12 from operating Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes. And, thank you to staff and Councilmember LeBlanc and I had put this on the agenda this evening. Thank you for working together, her first thing that she's put on the agenda. So anyway, I'd like to pass it over to staff. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much Mayor. Yes, as you stated, yourself, Mayor Jones, and Councilmember LeBlanc requested that staff add this to the agenda tonight. We have with us our Deputy City Attorney Jill Mayland, our Director of Lean Government Christina Ray, and our Legislative Analyst Michael Lieberman, who will be tag-teaming on the presentation for this evening. The agenda item specifically has four components. We would like you to consider prohibiting those under 12 years of age from operating e-bikes in San Marcos, increase enforcement and enforcement-related education to reduce reckless behavior by young e-bike riders, increase awareness of the city law passed in 2024 prohibiting e-bikes on sidewalks in business districts, enhance education and safety training. And before I kick this off with staff, I would like to acknowledge that e-bike safety has been an ongoing concern, especially when it comes to our young riders. The city recognizes that e-bikes have many benefits. Last year, the City Council approved an active transportation plan which includes more bike lanes and other infrastructure to encourage more walking and biking. The purpose of tonight's item is not to imply that e-bikes themselves are a problem. Instead, we simply want to make sure that everybody stays safe, particularly our young riders. So staff has a short presentation, starting with an overview of some recent legislation. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Legislative Affairs Analyst Michael Lieberman.
Thank you very much. So, last year, City Council passed an ordinance which prohibits several things. First, it's carrying a person being carried on a bicycle or e-bike in a way other than intended. Riding bicycles or e-bikes on sidewalks in business districts where signs are posted prohibiting this riding. And then also using wireless telephones while riding a bicycle or e-bike without a wireless headset or if it's not configured for that. Last year, Assemblymember, go ahead please. Assemblymember Tasha Borner introduced AB 2234, which was signed by the Governor, which created a San Diego County Pilot Program for e-bike safety. This bill went into effect on January 1 and it allows cities in San Diego County to do several things. First, it allows them to prohibit someone that is under 12 years of age from operating a Class 1 or 2 bicycle. So Class 1 e-bikes have a pedal assist and Class 2 have a throttle. Additionally, it requires a mandatory public education period. This pilot program will end in 2029 and then the data collected by the pilot program will help the legislature determine whether to take this issue up statewide. To date, there are three cities in the county that have opted into this pilot program. The first was Coronado, then Chula Vista, and recently Poway. San Marcos would be the first city along the 78th corridor to prohibit e-bike riders under the age of 12. This pilot program requires several things. First, it requires a 30-day public information campaign, followed by a 60-day period where sheriffs would be issuing warnings instead of citations. Now I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Lean Christina Ray, who will walk you through our approach to both the required education and a new campaign to be kicked off prior to the winter break.
Okay, thank you so much. So, San Marcos has been partnering with the school district and with the sheriff to communicate about e-bike safety for about two years. What we're proposing is to build on that and to put forth sort of a new look and a new tagline just to like recapture people's attention, because we do have some new information to share. And so you'll see what we're proposing is a Ride Right campaign, which then tucks up neatly under our Safe San Marcos theme. And so here are some examples of some of the informational materials. Again, not new information, other than we will be informing people about the new ordinance, but kind of repackaging it just to recapture people's attention. One new activity that we're proposing is called Ride Right pop-up events and there's two main reasons why we're proposing this. One is that these Ride Right teams would show up at middle and high schools on campus exactly where the students are parking their e-bikes just as they're getting ready to leave for the afternoon. So that's one component, handing out safety information, maybe offering helmet fit checks, perhaps providing a little card that they can pass along to their parents with the things that we would like them to also check on their way out in the morning. The second component is about parents. I think we all recognize that no one entity, the city, the school district, what have you, can address all of these e-bike issues, it really needs to be a partnership. And parents is one group that we haven't yet engaged and so by working with the schools, we of course have our school resource officers, city staff, we also would engage with the parent associations. So getting those parent leaders at the school site to join us for these events, officially become part of the Ride Right team and then using those networks to really spread the word among the parents. So that's a little bit of a nuance to that new program. And then another additional activity that we're proposing is to supplement the training that the sheriff is already doing. The sheriff has trained, I think on last count, almost 1,000 students so far, visiting the high schools and middle schools. What we're proposing is to supplement that by partnering with the Bicycle Coalition. It's a little bit different type of training. For example, they have one that's called City Cycling, that's very hands-on. So there's a classroom component and then they actually take the students out on the road and practice with them some of the things that they've learned. Another offering, which is newer, which I think really fits in with our theme of everyone getting involved, is called Family University, specifically tailored to e-bike safety, where you involve the whole family and the parents come along too. So those would be additional offerings that would be available to anyone in San Marcos, whether you have students in the schools or not. And then, the staff report outlined the costs, the estimated cost for these various items, which you can see here. If the City Council decides that it would like to proceed, we would be asking you to pass a resolution appropriating an additional $77,000 in general funds in the fiscal year '26 budget. And that concludes our short overview, there's three actions we're asking for tonight. One is to adopt a resolution prohibiting e-bike riders under age 12. The other is to adopt the resolution appropriating the funding. And then as sort of a extra measure, we call it what, suspenders and a belt, right? Yes, so the state legislation allows us to enact this through resolution or through ordinance. We are proposing tonight that you approve an ordinance, which means that it would go into effect immediately. We are also proposing that you consider introducing an ordinance that will put it in our code. Just for like a little bit more visibility, it's enforceable either way. So that was, that's what that third item is, is introducing an ordinance which would also prohibit the e-bike riders under 12. So with that, that concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember LeBlanc, would you like to start us off?
Sure, I am beyond excited to bring this as my first agenda item. As I mentioned earlier, I have an 11-year-old son and he is completely mesmerized by people popping wheelies and doing unsafe things on e-bikes. And I told him there is no way he is ever getting an e-bike with his maturity level. And I just firmly believe that under 12 years old, the maturity is just not there with regard to decision-making, with regard to impulse control, with regard to responsibility. So that was sort of my foray into wanting to bring this agenda item. I personally think that the age range should be a little bit higher, but we are doing what we can with AB 2234 and I think this is an amazing law that is a great start to everything that we're trying to accomplish. And the big thing with our Ride Right campaign that I'm really excited about is it's a way to empower the kids, a way to empower the parents, a way to empower the parent organizations. And I think that's really important, we don't want to feel people like they're being punished. We don't want to feel people like they're being punished. We want people to make smart decisions and be really educated and feel like they can be good partners on the road and be really safe. And I love that we're partnering with the sheriff's station, we're partnering with the school district, we're partnering with a bunch of community organizations, which is really exciting. And I would love to see us expand our partnership with community organizations and reach out to, for example, the Boys and Girls Club, and just anyone who can really help us to get that message out and help educate our kids. And mainly, you know, I'm just really excited about this, really passionate about this. I think there will be future changes to this ordinance, and I think there will be future changes to state law. But I think what we're doing right now is a massive step in the right direction. And I would also love to see us expand our permitting courses. We do those once a year now at the beginning of the school year. And I'd love to see us do another one in January for the kids who get e-bikes over the holidays. And also just a reminder, you know, halfway through the school year, here are the things we still need to work on, we still need to be good partners in the community, we still need to be safe, we need to be making good choices. And also, you know, a lot of kids will need the reminder that under 12, these are not okay anymore in San Marcos. Make sure you're staying off of the sidewalks. I love that we are going to do some signage. All of these things are really exciting to me. So I'm just really thankful to bring this as my first agenda item, and I'd love to, can't wait to hear what everybody has to say about it.
And we have one speaker, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. So we have one speaker, that would be Allison Stanton. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, and I promise you, I have prepared my speech and Councilmember LeBlang, and I did not talk beforehand. So this is going to sound very familiar to the remarks you just made. But I wanted to express my strong support for adopting the e-bike safety ordinance before you tonight. This is an important step in implementing an e-bike safety pilot program, which I understand gives cities like ours the authority to prohibit riders under 12 from operating Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes. And until statewide laws are enacted, which are needed, it's critical our cities look at alternative routes like this to keep our communities and kids safe. I absolutely support this. And if I'm being honest, I think 12 is still too young. Living on a busy intersection myself, I see what I think probably are hundreds of e-bike riders throughout the months. I'm on a corner where it's kind of a thorough fair from the school district, so I get all sorts of kids riding from school to home in between schools. The riders I see doing wheelies in traffic, riding without helmets, or my personal favorite of not having their helmet buckled, or zipping across lanes of traffic are almost always middle-school-aged kids and older teenagers. They're not bad kids, they just don't have the maturity, the awareness, or judgment yet to safely handle a motorized vehicle that can reach 20 miles per hour. The state has already recognized that Class 3 e-bikes setting the minimum age at 16. I hope San Marcos in the future will continue to evaluate whether that same threshold could eventually be used for Class 1 and Class 2 bikes as well, or at least require the completion of a safety course, like a permit to obtain, to obtain for younger riders who haven't yet gone through one at their school. I also encourage the city to add a simple but important safety requirement, reflective gear, and front and rear bike lights for anyone riding after dark. I can't tell you how many times I've seen kids on dark streets in their black hoodies, completely invisible until you're almost right on top of them in your car. That's just a tragedy waiting to happen, and a $10 bike light could literally save a life. I thank the council for pairing this ordinance with the new funding resolution for enforcement and education, especially the partnership with the San Marcos Unified and Sheriff's Department. Rules only work if people understand and follow them, and that combination of outreach and accountability is exactly what will make a difference here. Thank you for taking this issue seriously. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Allison.
I had a question. Isn't there lighting that's actually required now on bikes, on e-bikes, on some of them? No?
Yes, there is.
I thought that I had read it somewhere, though I was trying to look for it as she was mentioning it, and I can't find it that quickly.
It's required by state law.
And kind of an interesting thing, two nights ago, I was driving, and it was dark. I live off of La Maris, so it's pretty dark out there. I barely, I barely saw this kid. It actually really, really upset me because he was going up and up on the sidewalk, down onto the road. Dark clothing, no lights, and as your favorite, Allison, with the helmet that was just flapping. And I, I mean, if I couldn't see his skin, I would have not seen him at all. And he was, he was just weaving all over the place. And I thought to myself, I'm really glad we're taking this step because it is, it is very frightening. I get a lot of emails, a lot of text messages, a lot of people reaching out, and even on social media saying, you know, the city needs to do something. This is happening in every city, I guess I want to mention that. It's not just San Marcos. But it is something that we definitely need to take care of on our end. But it is a four-legged stool, as I'll put it. It's the families. The families have a huge part in this because they're actually buying these, these e-bikes for their children without making sure, in some cases, that they know the rules of the road, that they know they're not supposed to be riding on the sidewalks. It's very dangerous. I had a friend in Santa Lejo, downtown Santa Lejo, that got knocked over, and I think she broke her hip. So it's the parents, it's the schools and the PTOs, it's the city, and then it's also our law enforcement. We want our law enforcement to be, you know, the last effort. We don't want kids to feel like, we don't want them to have fun. We do want them to have fun, we do want them to be able to get where they need to go. But we want to make sure that they're doing it in a safe manner. The other thing about the Ride Right, which I love, and our, our staff came up with that catchy phrase. The Ride Right is so important because it's, it's reminding the kids, and we're going to be doing it several times a year when they're back from summer, summer break, when they're back from possibly getting one for Christmas, you know, after the holidays. These are really important events for us to be out there, making sure that we are again educating the parents, educating the kids. And we definitely don't want to be the heavy, but we will if we, if we need to, to make sure that they're following the, the rules of the road. And the San, the San Diego Bike Coalition is a really important part of this too because they've made cycling fun, so we depend on them to do that. And you know, just last week, we did have an accident, kind of timely, a child under 12. So, you know, for us to take this tonight, I think it's a really important thing for the safety of our community, but really, it is going to be all of us working together. And, you know, I had actually stopped a few months ago. One of my neighbors, I saw them run a red light, two of them on a bike, as a matter of fact, and one had a helmet, one did not. I said, oh gosh, I don't want to be that mayor. But then I was like, you know what? If I don't say something, maybe no one else will know that they actually were riding like that. So I was like, well, if they come into my neighborhood, there they came around the corner. And I said, hey, guys, I care about your safety, and I really want to make sure that you are following the rules of the road. And I saw you run the red light. I saw, and I did it in a gentle way, I didn't scream. But it is our job to make sure that we are reminding our kids. You know, they took, it was well received. The kid that was on the back got off. He said, okay. He knew he was doing something he shouldn't. But at the end of the day, we want to keep our community safe, and we can't do that if we don't speak up, if we don't pass, you know, ordinances and resolutions like this. It's very important for us to do this together. And again, you know, Safe San Marcos is what we're all about. So it's always been our top priority to keep our community safe, including our kids, of course. And so we really are going to need everyone to come together on this and make sure that we are doing this in a responsible manner and just reminding in a gentle way. We don't have to get upset about it. But you know, for the good of our community, making sure that our kids know we care about them and we want them to be safe. And with that, any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the old traffic cop in me always looks at how are we going to enforce this? So we're looking at operators under 12. Are we going to put together the expectations for our deputies to enforce this? Because I see situations all the time where adults have, obviously, under 12-year-olds sitting in front of them and four hands on the handlebars. So we have to clearly identify what an operator is. They may not be the primary, but if they have some degree of control over it, are they then an operator? Or if they're riding with them? It's okay, my kid's on his bike, and I'm with him, and I'm watching him, but it's a 10-year-old. So I know the assembly bill is pretty explicit, but how we're going to approach this is going to be extremely important. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Musgrove. We're in great hands with our sheriff's captain, and we are collaborating and working together. So this is going to be an adventure for both of us as, you know, there are challenges with enforcing the, the resolution and the ordinance. But we are joined at the hip, working on it together, and I trust that he will come up with a robust solution because we, we are going to be asking children to be honest. Are you 12 years? Are you younger than 12 years? That comes with its own inherent bag of, of challenges. But yes, I have been working very closely with our captain.
I have, if I may, I have a follow-up to that because in the materials that we have in front of us, that piece was not clear to me in terms of where the liability is going to lie. I did see in the materials in front of us that the parents will obviously have some sort of liability, and I don't think that's clear in terms of what we're approving today. So can anybody shed any light on what our residents can expect? Both the minors and the, and the adults, or who might be liable?
Children will receive a $25 fine after the communication period and the grace period of 60 days. With any situation, they are minors. So ultimately, the parents would be responsible for the fine if it, if it was not paid or adhered to.
So for me, what I see here under parental liability, it says parents or guardians are legally responsible for their child's unpaid fines. So I don't know what that means, and I'm wondering how would one of our resident parents or guardians know what that means?
If I may, Councilmember? The state legislation specifically states that for any unemancipated child, that if they are cited for the $25 fine under the ordinance or resolution, that the parents are jointly and severally liable. So the, the parents are in lockstep with the child, and they are liable under this ordinance for that fine.
So is it possible to hear from our sheriff? Because I would like to know how this contact would happen, and then the citation would be issued to whom? In terms of the, the enforcement piece?
Are we, are we having our attorney?
If I may, since we would be prosecuting these things, if you can call it that, if it is made in the name of the unemancipated minor, it doesn't have to be issued to the parent. The parent is jointly and severally liable pursuant to the law. So if the minor gets a ticket and the minor doesn't pay, the parents are going to have to pay. And I don't think there is a requirement for the deputy on scene to ascertain the name of each of the, of the parents, et cetera. They can simply issue the citation to the minor.
Can you clarify, Helen, when you say an unemancipated minor, would we have such a situation where an individual under 12 would be emancipated?
That's what the law says, so that's what we put into the resolution and the ordinance. I think it's highly unlikely that there would be an emancipated minor that's 12, that's less than 12 years old. But, you know, who the heck knows? That might happen one day.
So I would think also, Councilmember Nunez, that in that situation, if you affect a traffic stop on a 10-year-old on an e-bike, you're not going to let them ride off because they can't ride off. So now we involve necessarily a parent or responsible adult to come out to the scene to take possession of that bike, so they would then be aware of the citation. It's, 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 on paper, it sounds easy, but when, in the field, it gets extremely complicated, time-consuming, and then you'll have situations where, well, you can't write junior a ticket because he's only nine. Well, that is the issue.
And thank you, Councilmember. And that is part of my concern, is who are we citing? Who are we making responsible? And, and what actually will look like? Then what does that mean in terms of what we're approving today? So for me, that's something that is not clear because as soon as I see that there are fines, and there are, are we in a criminal process? And does this mean this under 12 individual youth now is, what happens to this youth?
Generally, under that age, unless the process has changed, you wouldn't issue a citation. You would simply do a juvenile report, forward it on, but it would come to the city. So I would imagine the cap-
So are we taking possession of minors as a city? So for me, I'd like to see some clarification so that, because it's not clear to me what we're approving tonight.
And a tow truck for the e-bike.
The ordinance doesn't provide for minors to be taken into custody. It simply provides for the issuance of a fine or a citation for a fine. There's, there's no custodial element that's present in this ordinance.
And the fine would be issued to the, to the minor under 12 years old?
A fine could be issued after the grace period and the communications period is over. And I believe the resolution sets it at February, mid to late February. And that's, it may be academic. We don't know what the, the deputy will do at the time. It may be a warning. There's a level of prosecutorial discretion there, as there is with any administrative or criminal prosecution citation. So this is, this is akin to an admin site. It's 25 bucks if the kid doesn't pay. And it is issued, then the parents are responsible. That's it. There's no custodial element. There's.
I, yeah, I actually have a question of Councilmember Nunez. So, you know, I'm, I'm reading through this. I didn't see anything about taking custody. I'm wondering where that came from? Where did that question come from?
For me, as soon as I see anything that's in front of us where we're actually enforcing and we're potentially, it's just not clear to me whether or not this is a civil process, administrative, if what we're actually doing, the minute that a law enforcement officer, if a sheriff comes in contact with a minor, for me, it's not clear what that interaction looks like and what is the expectation of what should happen to the minor, one and the property. And I would like to hear at least some clarification or what's being contemplated so that the residents know what to expect.
Well, this is an assembly bill. This is not, this is an assembly bill that we, that we are adopting this evening.
So Mayor, Poway is a, a city that's already engaged in this, and since it's the same policing agency, maybe they can provide some guidance and come back with how they're handling this and how long they've been doing it. They may have already resolved these issues.
The language also specifically provides that it will not be issued to the court. So it's simply an administrative matter. And 12.25.050 B.C., which is probably a typo, is, states that if a citation is issued, a record of the action shall not be transmitted to the court, and a fee shall not be imposed if the parent or legal guardian of the person who violated this delivers proof to the city within 120 days after the citation was issued that the person has completed an electric bicycle safety and training program pursuant to Section 8.894 of the California Streets and Highways Code. So I think it's clear from the ordinance that there is no, there's no criminal enforcement because it's not going- because it's not going to the court. It is simply an administrative citation that is issued. It has a non-custodial element to it, and it is a fine of $25 that can be essentially obviated if a safety program is entered into within 120 days of that citation. So, it's as soft a process as you can possibly have.
And so, then, following that thread, Helen, the safety program, are they available today?
The California Highway Patrol is required to have enacted them since 2023. They are available today, and the city is working to develop other highlighted information and programs. So, I think there will be a number of alternatives available to comply with that section, so that you can be free of the $25 fine.
And then, so then, who would be responsible for completing this? The parent, the minor? What would that look like?
It is the person has completed. The parent or guardian of the person who violated delivers proof to the city within 120 days that the person has completed an electric bicycle safety and training program. It is geared towards the violator, and that would be the individual under 12.
That needs the education.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, so then, following the thread, then that's the burden of the city to ensure the compliance? Or is it the sheriffs? Or who would be following this process?
I think it's been described as a partnership. I mean, the sheriffs are the, the deputies are the eyes on the road, and they see a lot of this activity going on. Code enforcement might actually see someone performing these activities. But I think primarily, just based on the fact that they are on the road, and this is a road issue, it may well be the deputies. But it's, it really is an effort that is in partnership with any number of agencies and entities, and city staff being amongst them.
So, are we contemplating then creating a new system? Do we have an existing system for, to respond to this? Or what is it going to look like for us?
I think what's been described to you this evening is the creation of a system.
That's correct.
It's the beginning of the creation of a system, and that will be in place and enforceable at the time that the resolution, the citation process can be initiated.
So, in terms of any kind of due process concerns, or what we're contemplating today, we don't need to present that to our residents? They are none, we don't need to be aware of what that system will look like?
I don't believe that there are due process concerns here. We're not taking anyone into custody.
Correct.
We're not confiscating anything. We are simply requiring them to obtain information. So, the due process concerns for a potential of a $25 fine if you don't complete a course within 120 days are relatively minor.
And Councilmember Nunez, currently, any minor that is violating any of the vehicle code, we would treat them, just in this instance, as we would in any of those other instances. So, if they were doing something in violation of the existing vehicle code, we would treat them in the same manner.
But can you clarify, then, the vehicle code does have a criminal element to it versus an administrative process?
This pilot program specifically provides that records of the citation will not be transmitted to the court. You can't really have a criminal process unless something is transmitted to a court. So, this is designed to be essentially court-free. It's the city that is involved in this process. It is not the court. Again, the citation is not delivered or transmitted to the court. It is not processed to the court. It is not submitted to the court. It is not a court process.
So, then, when I look at the resolution, or the proposed resolution for the allocation of funds that we're being asked to allocate, does this, do these amounts include this, the establishment of this process, that we don't know exactly what it will look like? Or if somebody can help me out to figure out where this process is contemplated and taking place?
So, the $25,000 is geared toward additional overtime for sheriffs to increase enforcement of e-bike safety in general, not necessarily just this item.
And is this a one-time, or is this ongoing?
We're proposing as a one-time. If it's something that we find to be useful, and council would like us to bring it forward with the next year's budget, that's certainly something that we could do. But at this time, it's just contemplated as a one-time.
The establishment of the program.
The additional overtime.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's the establishment of the program. We're already having issues with e-bikes. We just have no rules and no ordinance that actually spells out what we expect from our kids. I think this is the establishment of starting at a point that we can actually change if we need to at some point in time. I would not be in favor of doing nothing. I think that as leaders in the community, and I sense some hesitation, Councilmember Nunez, I'm not quite sure what that is. But I think as members of the community, I think we, as leaders, we need to lead, and we need to start somewhere. And we're starting with the seed that Assemblymember Borner started. So, we're implementing that. We are the third ci, I'm sorry, the fourth city in the county to adopt this. And to move forward, we have to start somewhere. So, I hope maybe that those comments might help you with a little bit of comfort in this. But at this point in time, we do have kids. I mean, we just had one last week, we're all aware, that had an accident that was under 12. So, I think that it's important for us to, again, lead, start with the state law, because we cannot go further than that, as one of our constituents had actually asked us to do. We're following state law and implementing it, and it's a good start for something. And again, you know, there are 18 cities in the county. We're the fourth one, so that means 14 cities have done nothing. And for us, I think it's important for us to do something to keep our community safe, because public safety has always been our number-one concern here in San Marcos.
Yeah, I completely agree, Mayor. I think this is a great start, and it's certainly a timely topic, and I think it's something that we've all been thinking about and wanting to do something. And it is a great start. For me, there are other missing pieces. For one, I would like to know, right, if we do something that's more comprehensive, for me, as a starting point, right, if this, if the numbers that we're looking at, if that is a starting point, I would like to see then, what are the numbers, right? What are we going to be looking at in terms of for ongoing enforcement, which I suspect is going to be necessary? So, then, what cost will actually, what that will be for the city and for our sheriffs? And then, the other piece, I really like that we do have a standing collaboration with the school district. So, the other piece for me is, so what is the school district doing? What resources they've allocated for it? And then, the other piece is, what resources are they contemplating, contributing to this? Because for me, one of the things that I believe will be required is the ongoing education, the ongoing enforcement. And so, are we expecting all of this to be in kind? Or what will those numbers look like? So, those are some of the questions. So, the other piece then is, what is out there? What are the resources? What are the clauses? Because if I'm a parent, if I'm a resident, and I want to make sure that I have access to resources, to education, so where are they? Do they exist today? Are we hoping that they will be in existence? And if they're not, then I think that's part of the consideration that we need to make. Do we need a bigger allocation of funds? And then, obviously, the other piece is, if we do need those allocation of funds, are we thinking that we're going to decrease our allocation somewhere else? And so, that's something that I am wondering about. And so, I agree, this is a great starting point, but I also think that this is going to be an ongoing issue, especially the numbers that we're seeing. The other thing that I noted is that I actually saw that there was a decrease in the number of incidences. So, then, I didn't see what we, why there is a decrease, if it can be attributed to anything. So, I just have a number of questions. So, I'm wondering how we keep the conversation going.
Yeah. So, I think I can address some of those. In terms of the school district, what they've committed to is basically helping us with the education. They have ways to reach the parents directly, the students, obviously. So, that's what they've committed to in terms of helping to spread the word. Also, being a location where we can have informational materials, banners, and that sort of thing. And then, of course, they would be coordinating with us on the pop-up events, and you know, coordinating which schools we go to, and the times, and all of that. So, that's really what we've talked about so far. In terms of, you know, I think it's a pilot program, so I think you bring up a lot of good questions. And I think that, yeah, what we've proposed is, complies with the state law. This is what we're allowed to do under the state pilot program. And so, I think, yeah, we will be tracking all of the numbers. That's part of the requirement, is working with the sheriff to make sure that all of that data is collected. I think, you know, it's hard to look at, when we look at the data, I think it goes kind of up and down. And so, that is hard, right? Like, what do we do with that? Is there enough for even a trend? Like, when I look at it, it's a little bit all over the place. Definitely peaks on certain days of the week, right? Which tells me that it's usually a Monday or Tuesday, right? Not the weekends. So, we can, I guess, hypothesize what that means, but that's something we can see from the data. But we'll definitely be tracking the data to see if there's any change after this, because that's ultimately, I think, how we'll know if we've been successful.
And I think too, I think too, when you are starting a brand-new pilot project, you're not sure how it's going to go. You might need to make tweaks. And so, I think all of your concerns are great, Councilmember Nunez, and I'm glad that you've brought them up, because I think as we start to roll it out, we will find, that didn't work, but that works. And you know, that's, again, you know, being a leader and what we're doing, we are the first city in North County off the 78. I know that Carlsbad had done a, what was it, a state of emergency or something like that? So, but they haven't actually adopted any rules yet, or the state pilot project. I think, you know, we have always kind of been the first ones to do certain things. And I think, you know, we always tweak a little bit here and there. We're fast on our feet, as I always used to say. And we make changes as we go along to further serve kind of trends and things that are happening. I mean, look at our tobacco ordinance this evening. We've made a lot of tweaks to that over the years, in the 10 years that we've had that. So, I think this is a good first start. I think working with, again, you know, it's not going to fall all on the city. It's going to be the city, law enforcement, the parents are a big part of this. And a lot of people might not actually be aware of this, but from the moment that kids leave their home, go to school, before they get home, that entire time, the school district is responsible for them. So, they are a very important part of this puzzle. But you know, for us to try to get something done, I don't think it's going to be perfect, because again, we're relying on kids to have good character, and I think they do for the most part. I don't think that kids are, you know, they're not going to be dishonest, I think, just on their own. I think that, you know, if they, if they are, if we, if they're asked by law enforcement, I know that when I was a kid, if I was asked by law enforcement, I'd probably be crying of anything that if I felt that I had broken a law. But I think it's important for our kids to understand that we care about them, we want them to be safe, we want them to know the rules of the road, and we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can as part of the stool, the four-legged stool. We're not the only one. We really do need to rely on the parents as well, and the school district, and of course, our law enforcement, Sheriff Department, which they do a great job. Anyway, Councilmember, did you have something else to add?
So, I just want to reemphasize, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but this is just for anybody who's watching who isn't familiar with 2234 and hasn't read up on it. It's a pilot program through the state, and we are instituting this pilot program, and we are creating our own pilot program here in San Marcos. So, the way that 2234 works is we are just taking the wording of that and putting it in our ordinance. So, it allows for us to ban e-bike riders under 12, and it was aimed at San Diego County. So, any of San Diego County and the cities within San Diego County can implement this. It sunsets in 2029, at which time, the state will decide whether they want to make this a statewide law. So, you know, they're learning as they go. We are learning as we go. I totally understand these concerns, and I'm really glad you brought a lot of them up, because I'm sure a lot of the viewers and a lot of our constituents will have the same questions. And I think the answer is, we are going to learn as we go. We will change as we go. We may have to update the ordinance. You know, who knows? But I think we are doing some really exciting things. I don't think the goal here is to punish and, you know, stop every 11-year-old and/or 12-year-old and say, "Hey, how old are you? You know, should you be riding this bike?" I think it's still going to be, you know, are you having unsafe behaviors? And go from there. It's just an option. But I love that we're trying to make this fun. We're trying to make this, I think it's empowerment over punishment, honestly. And I think this, as a parent, this gives me a lot of reassurance that, you know, if there is all this empowerment, all this positive messaging, these pop-up events, all of, you know, every time someone sees the green vest, the "Ride Right," they are learning more and more about how to be safe riders on the street, and be a good partner with our drivers on the road and everybody else. And this will let parents feel safer with having their kids who are 12 and over ride an e-bike. So, I think this is just a massive, amazing step in the right direction, and you know, we'll just continue learning and growing with it.
Well, and it also, you know, helps foster responsibility. And you know, another thing too, is all the information that we compile with our stops, where, you know, we're saying, "Okay, do you have everything?" Or your, is your, and again, the helmets need to be buckled, of course. But you know, are the kids paying attention to being responsible? And are they learning that in a manner that's important? We're giving all of that data to also make the state law better, too. I think, you know, as we learn together, we will also be able to help Assemblymember Borner, help her craft the law in a better, in a better way, if possible, to make it more comprehensive, if that's necessary. At the, kind of to your comments, Councilmember LeBlanc, we don't want to punish. We want, we want people to be safe. I mean, at the end of the day, we want the responsibility. We want to learn. I mean, you have to learn responsibility at some point in time, and then having the rules to help them, the pop-up events. It's an educational step in the right direction to keep our kids safe. And yeah, Deputy Mayor, I saw you, I saw you waving your hand.
Yeah, I did not expect this conversation to go on in all those different directions.
Yes.
But I'm not going to repeat what everybody has already said, although I agree with much of what has been said. I do think this is a challenge that needs to be proactively engaged by our community.
Yeah.
Like, like some of you've already said. I saw a couple of young riders doing willies near the Creekside Marketplace just last night. I think we all see it on a regular basis. I get contacted by constituents all the time about concerns about e-bike safety, both for the riders, and also for pedestrians. And this is just something that is very badly needed. And I just don't think we can go wrong with doing more education and bringing more awareness, especially, you used the word four-pronged, or a four-legged stool. In my notes, I said multi-pronged approach. And it's the riders, parents, schools, and law enforcement, right? And I think the parents' piece of it is very important. And the more that we can highlight and bring this to the attention of the parents and everybody else in the community, to talk about how important of an issue this is, the better. Now, having said all that, I've said it before, up here before, many times. In fact, Allison, our speaker tonight, she and I were texting with each other this morning about, hopefully, this will bring about a statewide comprehensive set of laws around e-bikes, because while I understand why we're seeing the cities and the current beta test law that's been put in place, allow cities to beta test this, literally, city by city, what we really need in the long term is a statewide set of laws that will govern e-bikes and protect- e-bikes and protect the, the youth that are riding. So that way, it doesn't matter what city you are within California, you'll be operating under the same rules. And that will also better set up law enforcement for success when they're trying to enforce those laws. And so hopefully, this will be the first step towards a future where we will have a law in California that will help keep our kids safe.
Thanks. And we do have one more speaker. John Mosher wanted to speak on this. Is that correct? Yes. Sorry, he added it. It wasn't, it wasn't original. So just so you don't think I forgot.
Well, I was going to put up my hand, but...
I knew. I was just waiting till the right moment. I felt like there was a lot of passion...
I mean, that's why I turned the speaker slip in.
Yeah, thank you.
No, the, the one question I've got on it is what happens to the bike? You have certain bikes that are illegal for any of them to ride right now, the motorcycle e-bike. But these, you, you've got a bike that essentially it's illegal that they're even riding it. So is there an impound part of this that's going to come into play, depending on what the deputy decides to do? I think maybe that's one thing, maybe Councilmember Nunez was hitting on when she mentioned property and money. But what, what really happens to the bike? If you, if you pull the kid over, you send him home on the bike with, with the fine and then wait so many days? Or does the bike get impounded until they're old enough to actually ride it so they don't lose the bike? That's the question. I don't know what's happened in the other cities like Coronado. Instead, maybe Chula Vista, if they'd had it long enough to actually have been doing this?
We're going to approach this like we do anything. The goal is definitely not to acquire a large stable of, of e-bikes. So our deputies are so kind when they are out in the community enforcing. Education is primary. Trying to get a hold of the parents once we realize that, oh, this, this child is underage, shouldn't be driving the bike. Can we get mom or dad to come and pick up the bike so that we're not sending the underage child home unsafely on a bike? If there is some egregious situation that in, means that the sheriff's deputies have to take a bike, they have the ability to, to store them, the goal is to get that bike back to the family as quickly as possible. So this really is trying to nurture the community into doing the right thing. That's our goal. We just want to keep our kids safe and, and do it as, as humanely and, and as proactively as we can.
Okay. I will say one thing. This, this last summer, I didn't see as much e-bike activity around Woodland Park as what we'd seen the year or two before. It got really bad. So all the outreach the school district's doing and the messages, they are getting out there. So it would be nice to, if they, if they actually knew how to signal like they're riding a regular bike with the hand signals that we had to learn growing up, that would actually be nice. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion?
I do, Mayor, I do have, I am concerned about the current proposed timeline for enforcement. That is something that concerns me in terms of the, the period that we're contemplating that I believe we're already entered into. And so that is a piece that concerns me. The other piece is really not knowing whether or not the resources are available for the, the riders and their parents in terms of having the availability to get the education that might be required. So that is another piece that I want to make sure that, that that is available and in existence. And, and for me, one of the things that I would like to see, and I'm not sure how that would happen, is that we revisit this probably very quickly in the, in the coming year in terms of what the process looks like and the, the actual funding requirements to sustain.
In terms of the enforcement, we, we had a lot of discussion among staff about how to, when to switch from education. We're required to educate only for 60 days. What we've decided is to extend that to February to give just a little bit extra time so that the contacts would be educational if the sheriff were to approach riders. And then, starting in February is when they would have the ability to enforce with citations.
Did the school district have a position on that in terms of the timeline?
Yeah, I don't think we got into that level of detail, although I did share the staff report with them.
Okay, any further discussion?
Would you like me to make the motion?
Would you like to?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion to adopt...
Wait, okay, so make sure you read it off of the, off of the thing. Because there, there's a couple of numbers.
Okay.
So you can say it so that...
Give me a moment. My first time doing this.
I'm helping you out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
A motion to adopt Resolution 2025-9508 prohibiting persons under age 12 from operating electric bicycles. Like to make the motion to adopt?
And that you can go...
Do all three? Okay. I'd also like to make the motion...
I got it.
To adopt Resolution 2025-9509 authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2025-26 operations budget to appropriate funding for enhanced e-bike education and enforcement activities. And I'd also like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2025-1567 amending the San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter 12.25, to codify the prohibition against persons under age 12 operating a Class 1 or Class 2 electric bicycle. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, you don't do that. That's okay. So we have a motion. Do I have a second? That's, it's okay.
Good job, Mayor.
Oh, you're trying to take over.
I'll get better. I'm sorry.
No, that's funny. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. Oh, that's funny. Sorry. Okay, moving on to oral communications. Do we have, no more oral communications? So, moving on to, shoot, where is my, where are my notes here? Uh-oh, there goes my email. Okay, so, here we go. So I had a Sandag Board meeting. We had just a few items. There were mostly, it was just the policy advisory committee actions. And then we had recommendations to a couple of things that our CEO had done. And then the Transnet ordinance, we had the ITOC annual report that came in front of us. Every, pretty much everything was done on that. There were some corrective actions that needed to be done, which they are in the process of doing. And then we had the, let's see, hold on, where is it? Oh, the project funding strategy and considerations for the new, it's so weird, they didn't even have this on here, for the new regional plan. So we talked about a lot of different things. But it's, all of our funding comes from federal, state, and regional, local sources. And we were talking about prioritization and how that's going to affect what we have moving forward. Because there are a lot of projects and not enough funding for everything, of course. And so we talked about what that's going to look like. One of the things that we talked about, which is here, very successful here in San Marcos, is our microtransit and how we might shift from having, you know, big buses to something that's smaller, like our, our small little buses, our little NCTD Plus. And so how that might look and how we're going to look at what's happening trend-wise, regionally, and how we might make some changes. So we're going to be looking at, in the regional plan, everything that was passed in Transnet. And then, like, for instance, there is a tunnel going to Coronado. Obviously, I don't think that's going to end up happening. And so just how we could better use that to move people and how can we move people over to Coronado a little bit quicker? There are definitely other strategies that we could do. So anyway, at the end of the day, still, we, but we were starting to have the conversation of all these projects, not enough money. What are we going to do? And how are we going to best use the funds that are here and also build credibility with our community? So at the end of the day, nothing was decided completely, just talked about, you know, how we will be moving forward and what those priorities might look like. Okay, moving on to League of California Cities. Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet next month, Mayor.
Okay, I wanted to ask staff on, something on this. SB 79, could we get an analysis of the tiers and how they might impact the city if there are any, any areas that we think that might? Because there have been so, so many revisions before it was actually approved. That is the seven stories by right.
It's the, it's the distance between what is a transit center and what is now defined as a transit center?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and what that looks like and, and how that will impact our community? And if we have areas that will be kind of what our thoughts might be about that?
Yes, absolutely. We can expand on what we included in the newsletter.
Perfect. Okay, all right.
Mayor, may I, we do still have time. The, the league is asking for this annual survey to be completed, for them to set their priorities. The deadline is this Friday, October 31st. So if you haven't completed that survey, please complete it. Maybe fill, forward it to the council so it goes to the top of our inbox because we do have a, this week, too.
I actually thought, I think I, I think I read, I saw it today. And I was like, oh, reminder to, to go back to it. But thank you for the reminder on that.
It's a problem when you wake up in the morning and overnight, there's 100 emails waiting for you.
Only 100? I wish. Okay, anything else on that? No. NCTD?
Yes, Mayor, we met last month. Relatively light agenda. We did, so we have a policy at North County Transit that we annually review and then approve any changes to the board policies, which we went through that exercise last week. We got, received an unaudited quarterly investment report, which the district on their, on their finances is receiving a 4.12% annual yield, which I think, considering the constraints that the district has to take a conservative approach with their, with their investments, that 4.12 was pretty impressive. And then lastly, we, we did the performance evaluations for our CEO and Deputy CEO and approved some salary increases and for them as well. That was it.
Okay. And next up, in North County Dispatch.
We meet in December.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance.
We're meeting this coming Thursday, or this Thursday.
City Council Business Visit.
Sure. Deputy Mayor and I met with our staff. And Georgiana Gilbert and Christian Cruz, they are co-owners of Bigger Picture Fitness. They're down off Diamond Way in the business district in San Marcos. Founded in 2022, they, it's unique. It's, it is a gym, really, really nice equipment in there. But what they do is they provide a facility for 1099 trainers to come in and bring their clients. So they don't have, they have memberships, but it's specifically designed for those who want to have one-on-one coaching. And so they have a clientele of trainers that will come in and bring their clients. And they pay a fee for that. It's a flat fee. They have a sauna room, they have a recovery room. It's, it's a pretty, pretty unique situation. I think on the board, I would imagine there were probably 30, between 30 and 40 trainers. They have a, a bit of a, well, they have a wall as you first walk in with little, the little Plexiglas mail slots and bio sheets on all the trainers. So you can go in there as somebody walking off the street, look at the trainers, pick up their sheet, see what their, their level of expertise is. And if you want to sign up with that trainer, then schedule your time to come in, what it is you want to work on, particular equipment, areas you want to focus on with your own fitness and wellness. And they have everything from the bikes to, I did see some free weights, but a lot of machines. So it's, it's very clean. It looks very safe, a very, very positive environment. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I was just going to add that you can not only go there physically and pick up a flyer on the trainers, but you can also look them up online on their website. They're looking to grow. It's a kind of a family-owned business. And I think they're, they're, they're pretty ambitious. And I think they're going to hopefully look for maybe a second location, maybe on the other side of San Marcos in the future. And one of the things that they said, I'm going to go away from my notes here, but that a lot of their customers that they, that they get are folks that are either walking their dog, or maybe they're walking the neighborhood or jogging in the area. And they see the gym there and they just stop by and, and they start having a conversation and, and then they sign up. And so that's just a great, organic way for them to get customers. So they're in a really, they're really in a nice location. They're right in between San Antonio Hills and La Costa Oaks. And it works really well for them, especially for that, that private trainer experience.
So is it, so I would imagine probably not that many people from the community as far as just like, are there a lot of people that are working, that are going out and just having their little break time?
Funny you say that.
I feel like it would be a break time.
We were there at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Yesterday.
And Deputy Mayor comments, aren't these people supposed to be at work? But it's...
No, they probably work from home. That's what I'm saying. Or they, they drop in to work.
It's a flexible situation.
Yeah.
They even went into some depth about how a lot of the trainers that are there, and I say 1099 because they're not employees of the, the operation, they, a lot of them are expats from like 24 Hour Fitness, who are, they get locked into this regimen, this is what you have to do with your clients. And they want a little bit of freedom so that they can bring in people that trust them and say, okay, now we can do one-on-one training that suits you. And so it's, I mean, they, we were there at 3:00 in the afternoon. I don't think there was an empty spot to workout.
Wow.
It's a real fun environment, too. There's, there's music pumping, like, like, almost like a club.
Was it like, I was going to say, was it like a club?
A little bit.
A lot of music.
Yeah, you could hear, you could hear it from the parking lot. And then they also have a very large screen TV, which they were getting ready to show the Monday Night Football game as well. So there was...
Oh. So it's an experience?
It's an experience, yes.
Do they have a coffee bar and a juice bar and everything?
Well, actually, they have machines, vending machines. They have drinks. They don't serve alcohol, which is counterintuitive with the workout.
No, when I said drinks, I didn't mean alcohol. I would think not alcohol. I'm thinking kombucha, energy drinks, stuff like that. You might not like it.
They have normal drinks, Mayor.
But these are healthy people that are going here. Like, I feel like they would like it. Filtered water, oh, okay. All right. Well, all right, thanks for that. Any council commentary? No? Veteran's Day is coming up.
Looking forward to it. Once again.
10 o'clock? 10 o'clock? Well, 10:30, well, 11 o'clock start time. But, you know, it gets pretty busy.
Yeah, parking's always at a premium, too.
Yeah, parking is at a premium. Anyway, thanks a lot. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.